Good afternoon. We will call to order the April City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. Welcome to the Planning Commission members, staff, and our guests. I would like to ask that everyone turn their cellphones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The clerk will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cromarty?
Present.
Mr. Dinkins?
Here.
Mr. Jameson here. Mr. McDuffie? Mr. Stern?
Here.
Mr. Stigemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
And Mr. Waits?
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. I would now like to briefly review the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of ten minutes. This time should include, but is not limited to, an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by the Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The clerk has a timer and will make presenters aware of when their time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. The consent agenda. The Planning Commission uses the consent agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion and vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, that item is removed from the consent agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining consent agenda items. The clerk will now read the consent agenda.
Your consent agenda this evening consists of approval of the March 7th, 2016 minutes, an annexation and comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for Spears Creek Church Road, an annexation with interim comprehensive plan map amendment and interim zoning map amendment for the park Phase Two on Cordgrass Road and Beach Fern Circle and Wood Creek Farms, the park Phases Four and Five, which is at 1712 Wood Creek Farms Road, the villages, Wood Creek Farms Road at South Olmstead Lane, a comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment for National Guard Road, Congry River, and South Stadium Road. And then also zoning map and text amendment for 1703 Wayne Street, which is designating the property as a historic landmark property, as well as 1608 Main Street, which is also designating the property as a landmark structure in the city. And that consists of your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any commission members or guests today who wish to have items on the consent agenda removed and placed on the regular agenda? Okay. I'd like to have a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I'd like to remind the commission that I need to recuse myself from the item regarding the National Guard Road and the Congry River property. So I guess I bring that up. We have to take two.
So we'll have to have two motions.
Yeah, if you wanted to split it into two, that'd be fine.
So can we have the first motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item number seven? Is that correct?
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Motion's passed. Now we need a second motion on item number seven with the National Guard Road. So can we have a
I move that we accept approve item number seven on the consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? The motion passes. We will now proceed with the regular agenda, and since we have a crowd tonight, I'd like to remind everyone that when they come forward to speak, to please state their name clearly prior to speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. That's going to bring us to item number 10 on the regular agenda, which is a site plan approval, which is a request to develop 4.1 acres, 100, 200, and 300 blocks of Northwood Street and the 200 and 201 Canal Place Drive. And this is for Canal Place Phase Two D3. And it's a request to construct 52 attached single-family residences. The site plan also includes common area and some off-site parking for visitors. This application was originally scheduled to be heard by the Planning Commission on January 5th, but after we received some phone calls, the applicant decided to defer the application such that he could meet with the Neighborhood Association regarding the proposal. Since then, the applicant has met with the Neighborhood Association, and they have agreed on some items that the city cannot enforce. But there is a signed agreement on behalf of the developer and the homeowners association. You have a copy of it in front of you. It is marked Exhibit A, and at this time, we would like to add that exhibit into the record. And again, it's not enforceable by the city, but it is an agreement. It's titled Articles of Agreement between the developer, the clarent, and the homeowners association, WTW Investments LLC, Canal Place LLC, and the Canal Place Homeowners Association and Homeowners Incorporated, and it's dated April the 4th, 2016. Staff has reviewed the application, and the staff comments are generally standard for a subdivision. And if the commission is inclined to grant the request, we would ask that they grant it subject to staff comments, and the applicant is present and can explain their case.
First of all, do any commission members have any questions for staff? Is the applicant present?
He is.
Over the course of the last nine months, we've met with staff on numerous occasions to address the technical aspects of the project and have made modifications in response to their comment. And we believe that we have a sound project as far as the code is concerned. Additionally, we took the extra measure to meet with the homeowners association to have a meeting of minds and provide them with the things that we could to make them feel better about the project. We went as far as to go to the extent of putting together an agreement to provide some construction services to them outside of the development to help with some existing problems that were left behind by the previous developer. We feel confident that we'll be able to help them in that regard, so.
Any questions for the applicant?
I guess I have just a couple of technical questions. I noticed earlier, I realize these are proposed cluster homes, but the five-foot side setback, I really, maybe this is a better question for staff than the applicant.
They're attached units.
So is that just not applicable because they're attached units?
Correct, and it's RG3, so attached is permitted.
In between lots 41 and, or 42 and 43, there's the, the open space is going to be left wooded. What's the thinking behind that?
The code requires us to keep a certain percentage of open space throughout the community, and through our process of configuring it and going back and forth with staff and meeting with them, the plan had changed in some regards, and we were able to maintain some green space, some open space, leave some wooded areas, albeit that it moved from the beginning of the plan to where it is now. We wanted to honor the requirement for the percentage of open space, so that's where we ended up.
Yeah, the open space requirements certainly make sense. I guess it's the wooded part that I'm a little confused.
Well, it's currently wooded, and we would, we just determined that we would leave it wooded and not remove those trees as part of the development plan.
Is there, is that a creek that's running through it? Through that, the wooded area?
There is a creek at the lower pond that has some erosion issues on the outflow of the lower pond. We have agreed with the homeowners association to repair the damage of the erosion that's getting pretty close to Northwood Street. In doing so, we're going to create some adjacent parking spaces for that wooded area, but we're going to try to leave as many trees as possible.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and
Hey, my name's Scott Hammond, and I'm with the Canal Place Homeowners Association. And we've been meeting with Trevor and his folks for a few months now, and we've had a chance to flesh this project out, and I think it's a lot better than what it was when it was first submitted in December. And look forward to working with Trevor. We've got some, some other things to work on in the neighborhood with our, from the previous developers, so. Any questions?
Anyone have a question?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up? Now I'll call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the site plan for the remaining 52 lots of the Canal Place Phase Two D3.
Second. Any further discussion?
And is that with staff comments?
Yes, please.
Mr. Dinkins? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Item number 11 on your agenda this evening is a zoning map amendment for Divine Street and at 2801 Divine Street and 720 Maple Street. This is a request to rezone from C1 to C2, those parcels along Divine Street, and a request to rezone from RG1 to C2 on the parcel on Maple. And staff does have a recommendation for an approval to rezone those parcels that are adjacent to Divine, and we recommend denial for the rezoning of RG1 to C2 on Maple Street. And we have two cor, two items of correspondence from the neighborhood with regard to similar comments of, from them, which I believe you have copies of that were provided to you.
Any questions from commission members for staff right now? Is this similar to what we had a while back when, what was it? Was it a seven?
You know, over the years, we've had similar requests along Divine Street. Recently, a very similar kind of request on Rosewood Drive going into the Shannon neighborhood. This has, it's going into, into the old Shannon area, so we've, we've had the same scenario comes up, you know, at least once a year somewhere.
We had this with the Whitney, the Whitney Hotel.
Yes, it was with, the other one down the street was a couple blocks was with the Whitney Hotel, correct.
Okay. So they want to go from C1 to C2, and from RG1?
Right, so on this, on the map that you have in front of you here, you have two parcels, one on the, on the northeast corner and one on the north parcels, one on the, on the northeast corner and one on the northwest corner of Maple and Divine. Those are currently C1s, and they'd like to have them C2. Majority of, of Divine Street is currently C2, and then there's that RG1 parcel that's on Maple Street that they've also requested to go C2.
Okay. Any commission members have questions for staff? Is the applicant here?
Hi, my name's Jimmy Williams, and I'm speaking on behalf of Divine Station LLC, which owns these parcels. We're an affiliate of Estates Management Company and 700 Woodrow, which did, converted the old Whitney Hotel and the redevelopment, and we also still own that. So, we purchased this land from Aflac Information Technologies in December of this past year, and it consisted of six individual parcels. And four of those parcels are grouped together here on the side. Can you point those out? The four that are together. Then we have one right across the street, and we have one back in the neighborhood on the corner of Maple and Lee. Two of those parcels, when we purchased, were zoned C2, and two of the parcels, or three of the parcels, we are seeking rezoning, which are the three that you have before you to go to C2. And there's one back in the neighborhood that is currently RG1 at the corner of Lee and Maple, and we have no intention of doing anything with that because we obviously recognize that that is within the neighborhood boundaries there. But in, in looking at this, the, we, we are treating the, the four parcels here at the corner of Maple and Divine as, as one group development. If you looked at that from an aerial, you couldn't tell where the parcel lines are divided. It's all used as a commercial use. There's parking lots for the buildings that are on the front, and that is the way we purchased it. And so, with that, we took a look back at the lower Waverly Old Shandon design guidelines and took a look at the map that was provided as far as the protection areas. And as you can note from the map, the, the parcels that are in question are in the far right corner, right here. And that RG1 piece that is there before you for rezoning is located outside of the protection area as well as being outside of the buffer zone, which are the hashed areas in the, the upper corner. And so, from that, you can see it was outside of the historic area. There's no overlay on, on that particular parcel. And so, with that, we recognize that the overlay is there to protect the neighborhood. And so, falling outside of that overlay district, we see that as, as one reason that this would fit with a C2 zoning there is it serves the buildings up front as well as the parking lot interconnectedness. We recognize that, that planning staff is recommending to not rezone the, the RG1 lot there, but we would like to just point out that, grab that other one, that, you know, the, the surrounding area around this, this back lot is not conducive to a, a single-family RG1 zoning. If you take a look right behind us, we have Shandon Terrace Apartments, which there's 20 apartments there, 18 units an acre. Right across the street's Grand Divine. There's around 50 condominiums there. I think that's 25 units an acre. We've got 700 Woodrow just up the block. And then, right behind us, we've got Epworth Children's Home. That provides a great buffer there also to the, the neighborhood. So, as well as the townhomes that are right next to actually that, that back parcel that we own. And, you know, we look at that as, as providing us a, a great buffer to the neighborhood. If we did commercial zoning here on the, the front parcels, that there would be a buffer. I think the, the nearest single-family house that's utilized is a foot, over a football field away. I think it's 350 feet away from, from that back parcel that we're looking at that's in question here. So, you know, with that, our, our goal here is to just get these parcels to a singular zoning code. I think that'll help with future development of this, this parcel as we kind of look at our comprehensive plan of what we plan to do here. So, we want to have a cohesive plan and a cohesive development along Divine Street instead of kind of piecemealing different zonings together. So, with that, we're just asking that that be considered. It'll help us with, with green space and open space and setbacks and not having separate lines there. So, with that, if you have any questions, we would certainly open that.
Where is this RG?
Okay.
It's all right. Where, where is the RG1 right there? And, and you want to, you're asking to go to C2?
For all.
We are, for all the parcels, yes.
Is, is this Maple Street property, is that parking required to meet parking requirements for the office building?
It is. And Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we had a motion before City Council back in January that was approved that, that did restrict that parcel currently to parking until we can develop parking elsewhere in the future that would be allocated to those buildings.
That's correct.
What might that be?
Can staff allow, or I'm sorry, you guys.
No, if you, you say until you can develop parking some other place?
Or if we can just allocate it across the street or ask for a variance, or there would be some future, I guess, method of going about that parking. But currently, it is back there until, I believe it has to go back before City Council.
No, it, it is kind of, that's done now in this case. As far as the parking that's there, it covers what they need for now, basically. Any future development that would be proposed would have to meet the guidelines for whatever they propose. So, an office building there now, currently, it's fine, but if they came in with a different use, we'd have to look at that parking for that specific use at that time.
Okay, so, so if we don't allow the parking on the Maple Street property, it could pretty drastically restrict the amount of development in the future for the C2 property on, on Divine?
Say it again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If, if we denied the request, at some point, some, they sold that property off and they built residential there. It would drastically reduce the amount of development that could happen along Divine Street on the rest of the property.
Potentially.
Taking a large, a large chunk of parking that's, that's required for that building right now.
Right, that's correct.
Can staff speak a little bit, or can you elaborate on your reasoning for denial on this? I mean, I read, I read your recommendation. I was just curious if there was a, something you had planned for it or something that you don't want to happen there that you're worried about, or?
Well, as a, as a, a general policy, we have, whether it's along Divine Street, Rosewood, or Millwood, or North Main, we have traditionally discouraged commercial development encroaching into the neighborhoods. There are a number of neighborhoods who have experienced that, and the various neighborhoods have, have come out and would like to keep that commercial along the corridor, not creeping into their particular neighborhood. So, that would be sort of the, the number one to your question. The second one is the land use plan for this, the, the city. On this particular map that's on the screen there, it's that parcel that's a, a parking lot is currently classified as a residential classification, while the par, properties on Divine Street are classified as commercial. The applicant did note that there is the historic district, but that historic district stops at that apartment building that is just north of, north of that parking lot. So, the historic district does not come all the way to the existing commercial line, which was what they were referencing. But the land use plan, which is the vision and the zoning, you know, it all accord, correlates. That's the second reason for the, the recommendation that's in the report.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, follow up with Mr. Taylor's question from earlier. The existing parking lot that's owned RG now, they can continue to use that as a parking. That's a use that would, they could, you know, develop on the C2 property and use the RG property for parking potentially.
Okay. So, the properties on Divine Street, you, you don't have a problem rezoning those?
No, we do not.
It's the Maple?
Yes.
And I'm, you know, when I look at this and I see the uses on C2, it goes back to what we've been doing in the Shandon area and, and Rosewood everywhere, where these properties are touching on neighborhoods. Your intentions may not be at this point in time to do anything, but it could be sold to somebody who could put something on there that would affect this neighborhood, such as all the items listed in C2, the permitted uses. Am I right with that, Brian?
Yes.
So, that could be a grocery store, a bakery, a special exception, could be a coin-operated laundry, a liquor store. So, I suggest we look at that.
I think the only thing I'd like to ask is if you were to zoom that map out a little bit, and you went a block to the west, and you went to a block to the east, is the depth of the Divine lots that are C2, are they more consistent with what you see there on, on, I think that's Holly Street there, and on the other side of the PUDR to the west? Because it's, almost appears to me that there's a certain depth line that it would be consistent with the Maple lot being C2 that's established if you look to the far west on that site plan and the far east.
If you were to zoom out on the map, you'd see some, depending what side you're looking at, there's some inconsistencies, some push back further into the neighborhood, some not so much. But if we were to look at, you know, what is in the area as far as C2, like I said, it, it would just vary. But there's a, you know, if you zoom way out, there's a pretty predictable pattern of where you're going to see it. But when you get in closer with lot to lot, again, some goes back further than others.
Because that's the one thing I, I think that's a little deceiving about that particular diagram that shows the zoning classifications, is such a large piece of it. It's a PUD. And so, it looks like it's almost residential, but it's, there we go. I think that, that's a little bit more represent, representative of kind of the depth of where the C2 ends, at least my perspective.
Well, now, that's a, that's a residential area.
I think if you, if you were to zoom out, I think what Brian was saying, if you look at that, the parcel that's over on the right-hand side of the screen, that's the fire station. That lot goes a little bit farther deep. And then, if you look on the other side of the C1, there's a parcel that goes a little bit farther deep from Divine, and there's sort of that variation of sort of the, the deeper lots versus the shallow lots. So, there is that, that pattern that happens along there. But in this particular case, it's also the fact that the commercial's turning the corner. So, there is the depth of how far it projects into the neighborhood, but then there's actually, the secondary thing is when that commercial actually turns the street, and now you have the commercial facing the side street versus fronting Divine Street.
The other thing, help me understand, is the, the multifamily that's just to the north of Maple Street, the Maple Street lot under discussion, if that were to get torn down and redeveloped under that zoning classification, could you rebuild that multifamily just as it's currently drawn?
No, you couldn't. You'd be limited because of the density to, I believe it's, is that RG2?
No.
So, sixteen, 16.4 units is what you could build back. That is the maximum density, but of course, with the parking and landscaping, you would not be able to get that back. So, if it burned completely down, you would not be able to build it back as it is.
So, in essence, it's providing, in my mind, almost like a density barrier unless it gets knocked down, and then you're going to have something that's going to be of a smaller density likely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. Multifamily is permitted in RG1, though, correct?
Yes.
Quick question for the applicants. So, what is it, other than, I understand the fact that it would be nice to rezone all these parcels to the same consistent C2 zoning, but what is it about this parking lot parcel, if it stays RG1 and presumably probably your parking for your site, what is denial of this request due to your project, or what, what is, is there some reason that you have to have this parcel zoned C2?
Sure. Well, we were looking at this, and the four parcels that, that make up that, that corner lot there, we were looking at, looking at it all as one group of parcels, as almost one parcel. And so, we're doing some work here shortly to renovate the office building there at the corner of Divine and Maple. And we're analyzing our plans for the, the smaller building on, on this side of the lot. And in coming for the rezoning, we were looking at being able to incorporate that land and kind of, it'd give us more flexibility in our designs of what to do with this smaller building over here if the whole parcel was zoned consistently instead of having to worry about setbacks and buffers on it. I think it would allow us to create just better planning and more cohesive development among this parcel instead of having different zonings to work through. And I, you know, another thing is that, you know, coming from commercial in the front to a buffer zone and then to the single-family neighborhood, you know, we're under the opinion that, that makes good place planning for the future. So, that's kind of how we viewed that.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just follow up on the property, the non-conforming apartments to the north are actually zoned RG1, so you'd be looking at 8.7 units per acre as opposed to 16.4.
I, I think the commission's biggest problem is just the same old commercial encroachment in the residential neighborhood. And I think it, it would be great for you to have that flexibility to do what you want with this site. I mean, I get that, that makes sense. But I guess the overall concern is if this lot was to be sold off, your development doesn't work, and then we're sitting there with a C2 lot that the neighborhood, Old Shandon opposes, just being commercial and encroaching in their neighborhood.
I've got a question for staff. If that lot, the lot in question that you guys denied remains as it is, what type of limitations upon expansion does the applicant have commercially outside of doing something commercial in that lot? I mean, couldn't that lot still be used as parking to facilitate any and all commercial growth that they may desire for that corner lot?
It could. Existing parking generally, you know, speaking, could stay just like it is and be used for their commercial development.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Can I make one final statement?
Sure.
Just, if you follow the history of this, I mean, even going back to 1913, this area was a commercial node. And I believe it was 1980, I think it was in this half right up. This parcel was actually rezoned from C3 to RG2, I believe is what it was at the time, or RG1. So, at one time, I mean, that was a commercial zoning there. And I think it fits even, we have a map even going back to aerials of back in the 90s and before, where that lot was used and still connected Divine Street even back then. So, it's been commercially used as parking facilities for these buildings for decades.
And, and that, that makes sense. Just as a small rebuttal to that part of our thinking here, is that we have recently, you know, completed the Plan Columbia, recent master planning, and this area does fall in a residential area. So, I think that's a lot of staff's concerns.
The, well, the, the plan does as, I'm sorry, wrong way. The plan does- The plan does, you know, recommend that area as residential. And the plan that the applicant was stating was, is the Old Shandon Valley Park neighborhood planned from 1980. And what it did was it recommended that 720 Maple Street, it was originally zoned C3 to have it rezoned to RG2. So since, and then that was one of the recommendations of the plan, the area was rezoned. So somewhere from the early 80s to this point, that parcel has been RG2. So, you know, and then we did the land use plan, that kind of correlated. So any going to C2 would be kind of a shift back to two plans ago for this particular area.
Thank you all. Are there any other guests who would like to come up and speak about this?
Hi, my name is Derek Riley. I'm the president of the Old Shandon Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood is roughly bounded by Millwood Avenue, Maple, Divine Street, and Martin Luther King Park. Our goals, one of our missions in recent decades is to fight off commercial encroachment into our neighborhood. And obviously, one of those things is not to give up any sort of general residential, particularly on our borders. We tend to oppose any sort of recommendation for any kind of project, not knowing what a rezoning would do down the road, not for a specific project at that time, and particularly with this case, where there is no defined project for this parcel. The developers did approach us, tell us their plans a few weeks ago. We're excited about what they had planned for Divine Street, but we were under the assumption or understanding really that the 720 Maple parcel would be used for parking for that project, which would have required no need for a rezoning. And we'd like to just express our opposition to the 720 parcel rezoning and say that we are in favor of whatever needs to change for Divine Street parcels.
Thank you. Brian, is this a single approval or can this be done with two parcels being approved and one not?
Yes, what you said, you could make an approval to approve two of the parcels and make a recommendation not to approve the other to move forward to council.
Okay. Are there any other guests who would like to speak on this matter today?
I'd like to make just one more statement.
Sure.
Sorry, I hate to interrupt. But if you look at the parcel and you look at residential zoning and look at four units an acre and what you could do there to, if you were to go study the area, it's not very conducive to that general use to live between the existing 18 units an acre and a commercial corridor, really. And I wanted to make that general statement. And then thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. If there are no other guests, no other questions from staff, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning for the two parcels on the north side of Divine Street and that we deny the rezoning for the parcel of 720 Maple Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd excuse myself.
I think the motion passed. Can we have a revote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item.
Your next item is also a zoning map amendment is for 2611 Forest Drive. Oh, this one's deferred too. Sorry, this one was deferred. The next item is actually 2634 St. Phillips Street. It is a request to rezone from RG2 to C1. This particular parcel, staff is also recommending denial. It is a residential parcel at the end of Phillips, St. Phillips Street, and the proposal is to combine it with the commercial property to the east.
Number 12 got deferred, correct?
Twelve.
I mean, did 12 get deferred as well?
Number 12 and number 13 were deferred by the applicant, yes.
So this is not 26114?
This is case number 14, 2634.
Yes, 2634 Phillips, St. Phillips Street.
Got it, got it, got it.
Any questions for staff from the commission? We have the applicant, I'm assuming, here.
Y'all need any information from me?
That's a good presentation.
We own the property adjacent to it, the larger tract, and it's C1 and it just backs up to it. So we're simply looking to join property to the bigger tract. We're C1, we're in the park, zone C1.
All right, so we're looking to rezone from RG2 to C1.
That's correct.
And I'm trying to look on the map in front of me. The piece we're talking about is...
It's the hatch parcel right about in the middle of the map.
I see it now. I see it. Any, are you the applicant? Are you the applicant?
I'm the applicant.
Will you state your name for the...
Okay, Burgess Mills, representing the property owner, Jim Ketchin's, filing law, and Robert Taylor, is the property that we're looking at buying. So I represent two owners.
Any questions for the applicant?
Any plans, Mr. Mills, for the property or request?
You know, the two obvious uses are medical office, residential care. We have a group might be going on a contract with the residential care, but who knows? So, you know, those are two obvious uses that I see.
Any, any other questions? Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for staff?
No, we just kind of follow up quickly. The staff report kind of covers it, but the encroachment of commercial office institutional in this case into residential area is the basis of staff's request for denial.
If there's no other questions, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the rezoning requests for the property on St. Phillips Street.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So we're denying it for, for what reason?
The same reason that we deny most of these properties, just the potential for encroachment into the neighborhood. It's kind of the reason why, if you had a plan in place or if this would facilitate you to do something out of the ordinary that would give us a reason to grant a general encroachment request, really.
Yeah, I'm working on something. They're working on a site plan, but it's not put together yet. I could give you what we're working on and maybe that would...
It really wouldn't sway me. I just was asking the question to see if there was something that would sway me, but I think the fact that you're working on something doesn't sway me to want to rezone one of our residential lots commercially.
I would have to agree if there was more cohesive plan here together that was being presented than...
You have a motion and a second on the table. You haven't voted, so you can do a couple of things. If you want to continue to have a conversation, you can make a motion to get that tape, that motion off the table. Or if you want to move forward and actually vote on the motion, you could do that, so...
Or do you want to take it off and vote?
No.
Then I'll call for a vote. The motion's been made, it's been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is approved.
Next item is number 15. It's the cell, mini cell tower, wireless communication text amendment. I amend 17 dash 283, which is a wireless communication facility section of our ordinance. Again, the purpose of this amendment is to ensure that, one, that the city is meeting all of the federal laws related to wireless communication facilities and updating our ordinance with relevant definitions and also the timeframe that we have to approve or deny a cell tower. As we know, we're moving away from taller cell towers, you're getting into more of the smaller nodes that basically, if you've seen a few of them perhaps around Williams Price Stadium, it's basically an antenna that they put on top of, you know, base station or, and it can be a building, it can be an existing utility pole, it can be any type of, you know, solid foundation or existing base station. Specifically, not to get too far into the federal law, but the Spectrum Act of 2012 really regulates how governments must approve certain modifications on existing co-locations to towers and base stations, so long as they don't propose substantial changes and the certain criteria that would show what a substantial change is. We have a certain amount of time that we have to approve or deny a cell tower. In certain cases, the language for the Spectrum Act gets very specific and it tells what we have to approve. And just quoting real quick from it, you know, it uses language like a state or local government may not deny and shall approve any eligible facility request for a modification of an existing wireless or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. So we're added to our existing ordinance with this proposed text amendment what these specific substantial changes would be. And again, it's out of federal law and the FCC's interpretations of those laws, kind of cumbersome, but I think the point to reiterate with this text amendment would be that the protections are still in place for the traditional wireless communication facilities or the cell towers. For example, a cell tower in the traditional sense, we think of a guy wired cell tower, a lattice cell tower, a monopole cell tower. Those protections are still in our ordinance. They generally are not permitted in residential areas for the most part and are historic areas, they're generally not permitted. There is still the avenue as it was before in our old ordinance. Many cases, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception. There is the allowances for some co-location on existing utility poles on the right-of-way. Our ordinance now really didn't cover that. There's been some companies that have come in and said they don't have to get zoning approval and they can do, you know, basically what they'd like to do in the right-of-way. So this text amendment also clarifies what staff's role is and what we can and cannot ask for from companies that come in. We'll see more and more of these small cell technology nodes coming in. There's three companies lining up now that want to go around the city in various areas. One of the things we did do at the staff level is we put a higher level of staff review as far as the aesthetics that normally would be required. Generally, if we're thinking about the older monopole or lattice communication towers, they would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and there are certain standards that would have to be approved before the board could grant the approval for, you know, traditional cell tower. We get into smaller nodes that blend in more. We added some aesthetic review from staff. We added some concealment options that are, developer could come in. For example, if you were coming into an area of Five Points, for example, you would want to potentially match the color of the existing utility poles if you're going to put them in that area so that they would blend into the aesthetics and environments of Five Points. Or any area that we go to, we'd want it at a staff level to blend in, obviously. When we look back at the larger cell towers, of course, you know, those are covered by the Board of Zoning Appeals or in many cases, they're not permitted at all still. So again, to take away from this, we're basically just making it up to date as far as federal law. We're outlining the review times that federal law mandates for us. We're allowing staff greater flexibility in reviewing these from a timeframe to fit within those criteria that have been set by federal law. And again, the protections are still there for residential and historic areas for the most part when we think of traditional cell towers as far as your, even the stealth cell towers that, you know, you may see come in. But that's pretty much, I know that's a lot and that's a lot to take in, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I have, I guess, a three-part question. How does this text amendment affect co-location? That's the first part. And then the second part is, does complying with the FCC result in staff having more or less authority? And if it is less, is it because federal law preempts the authority that we thought we had prior to the federal law? And so really, that's for information purposes. If we, federal law may preempt it, we may not have as much authority as we had before, but I'd like to at least know what we're losing and what we're gaining. Because it sounds like if it's smaller, then the process is a little bit more streamlined and they can kind of put it wherever they want to, but if it's still big and bulky, it has to have staff review. And I just kind of want to hear that one way or the other. Is that accurate?
From the co-location aspect, there's not much that really changed. We put more authority in the staff's hands to review certain co-locations. The chart that's in the current ordinance is generally the same. Staff, again, in certain design districts has more authority as opposed to the Design Development Review Commission. We added more criteria that normally staff will look at from aesthetic point of view. For example, if we just look at this existing chart, one and two are your traditional guy wire or lattice communication or monopole towers. They're not permitted in any design district. They are not permitted in residential districts. You get into the commercial districts or the mixed-use districts, they're permitted only by special exception if they meet certain criteria. So that's changed a good bit. Can you get to the next slide, John? So if we look at three and four, basically the same thing. They're exactly the same as it was before. You still have that protection via the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception and the criteria that are involved with those as far as notification and, you know, public hearing through the Board of Zoning Appeals are there. Next slide, please. When you get into existing structures, they're based on the height of that structure. So those criteria are still there with the exception of any design district, staff would review subject to the new criteria that we've created or the additional criteria that we've created. And it goes on, the higher the tower gets, the more that you'd have review involved with the Board of Zoning Appeals, for example. And when you get into a residential area, again, this chart really hasn't changed, it's the same chart minus just, you know, shuffling some things around. So that is the co-location part. As far as the federal, you know, local governments having approved and what we're giving up, Spectrum Act of 2012 basically talks about a substantial change is one that increases height of a tower outside right-of-way by more than 10% or 20 feet. 10% or 10 feet in right-of-way protrudes edge of tower outside right-of-way by more than 20 feet or width of the tower, six feet within right-of-way is, calls for more than four cabinets, has any excavation or deployment outside of current site of tower or base station would defeat concealment elements of a tower or base station, doesn't comply with some or other prior conditions of approval. So what that basically means is if it is a substantial change, it'd have to be reviewed as if it's a new tower. But if it falls under those thresholds that I just read, that staff basically has to approve them, generally speaking. So that's what the Spectrum Act of 2012 and that shell kind of covers. And also the timeframe. Applications must be approved within 60 days, subject to certain criteria to toll, say for example, if you didn't have enough information. And even with, it's very limited in what staff can even ask for as far as, you know, the criteria that we'd have to look. We're still going to take into effect historic preservation and the review that's involved with that. We're still going to take into, to effect historic preservation and the review that's involved with that. If we had an existing tower and, you know, it's a concealed tower of sorts, they're going to come in and add some new equipment on it that's really going to take away that concealment. Um, or on the other hand, if it's on a city property, you know, we still have some leeway on what we can and can't do. So basically it's just aligning the time that we have to review across the board this ordinance. Before, we didn't have that, you know, you used to hear, you know, the shot clock in various interpretations. Was it 60 days, 90 days, 150 days? And it's changed through the years. So this clarifies that we have 60 days for certain reviews based on what they are, 90 days for certain other reviews. And it just puts it out there so everybody know what we have to do. The review process is generally the same. You know, staff, again, has a little more authority of what they can and can't look at, but we're outlining the type of facility because that basically dictates where we're going to go. The timeframe for that review, based on that facility, the design standards that would apply for that particular facility. We changed the definitions and again, the process of review in certain instances is given to staff.
Brian, I, I have one question. When looking through it, on the very last page of the, um, before all the tables, number 14, please explain a little bit about the, um, no variance to the requirements of this section shall be granted by BOZA. Because I heard you mention a couple of things about BOZA, what?
Which page? I'm sorry.
I'm just, just stating, is that, I mean, does that mean you can't, nothing in here would be up for discussion, BOZA?
Which page are you clicking? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm not sure what page. It's the last page before the tables. This, John, you were just, just on it, right there. No, I'm sorry, um. Number 14 in...
Oh, it's towards the back. I know what you're talking about.
Almost at the end of the...
It's the design criteria, the additional criteria, the very end, number I, I 14. No variance to the requirements of this section shall be granted by those, BOZA. So basically the criteria that we have, one through 16 in this case, would be what we would be talking about. So for example, um, you know, if I came in and said hypothetically, I wanted to, you know, a traditional, um, you know, communication tower, I want to come in and do a blue pole. And the ordinance says, well, for, you know, new communication tower, it'd have to be a gray pole. You, you couldn't go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that. So anything that would be covered in here as far as, uh, just under I, additional criteria would have to be met and it could not be varied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. It just kind of locks it down.
Yes, that, that would be the only thing that, that I really don't like about it because I guess I just kind of feel that's what Board of Zoning Appeals is for.
There are different options. The larger towers are going to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals already. There's certain criteria that they have to meet and the Board of Zoning Appeals does have certain leeway in what they can and can't ask for. Um, a lot of times with the specificity involved with this is that a lot of companies come in and they may have something that they want to do and it's, really doesn't make good sense. So it just kind of narrows down. They do have the option of, for example, if they, um, you know, wanted to do an administrative appeal or something like that, you know, in this case, uh, you know, just the clarity of narrowing down what they can and can't do is important to staff for, you know, application of what these regulations are. And these criteria, they're not very stringent in the sense of, you know, you're talking about building a fence around a property, you're talking about lighting on a property, um, you know, banding on a property. So section I, one through 16, these particular criteria, um, aren't as much bulk or design orientated. They're more of your fall zoning letter, if, you know, design where it can't fall into the street or relocation or if abandonment, you have to take it down. Um, so they're very kind of unique in the sense that they're not very specific as far as, you know, the bulk requirements, the height or separation from other towers or distance from other communication facilities.
One, one thing I just, that just occurred to me, this is an example, Brian, I'm just kind of talking out loud, but, uh, the, the tower that was vetted out so much on the corner of, uh, Beltline and Trenan. So that one, I thought that, that, I thought the developers did a really good job of sort of blending that into the pine forest, for example. Well, that's what brown with green on top. And this, so if color, if they all have to be light gray.
In that particular case, there are different type of towers. The one on Trenan and Beltline was a specific stealth tower, a monopole tower. So it fall, fell within a different part of the ordinance. For example, if we were to look back at the chart on number four, number three and four, we get into the high and low profile stealth communication towers, which is what that would be. And if we go back to the definitions under 17283B10, stealth wireless communication facility is a structure fabricated in a manner that aesthetically masks its appearance as a wireless communication facility, including without limited to a flagpole, tree light or bell tower. So in that case, it has to be designed regardless to blend in. And the good thing about that type of facility, generally speaking, it goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the Board of Zoning Appeals will look at it. Does it blend in? Does it meet the criteria? And also the Board of Zoning Appeals would have additional criteria that they would have to, uh, meet.
Yeah, understood. I guess my, my point was that I just, I think it would be a mistake to not at least have that avenue out there for someone to go in front of the Boarding Zone Appeals and hash it out. Um, you know, I think most stuff in here is good and I think it's really good, but I just, I'm hesitant to pass this, say, you know, anything saying no variance ever. So that, that would be my only concern if we could, like the document, we could work on that. But I just, I don't like having a closing on that avenue.
I've got another question. Um, these criteria that cannot be changed by variance, what's the source?
What's the source?
Yes.
In what regard?
Well, no variance to the requirements of this section shall be granted by BOZA. What section are you making reference to when you say that? Like what's the source of the requirements of this section? What constitutes this section and what is the source of the requirements of that section which constitutes this section? And number 14?
It'd be the additional criteria, section I.
Okay, alright, so what's the source of the, of that criteria? Is that federal law? Is that state? Is that, like, what's the source?
It's the city's requirements.
Okay.
Generally speaking, minus perhaps, you know, any FCC requirement, um, FAA requirements.
Okay. Can you go back to number, back down there? Perfect.
Well, I mean, would, would, would it be possible or staff be agreeable to us, you know, approving this without number 14? And for the reasons that I said, just because I just don't like not having any avenue for the owners to, um, talk about different issues.
Or would you like to defer it and have a discussion further on this and then bring it back?
No, I would not like to defer it and have further discussion. I think it's, you know, you would either have a no variance to the requirements of section I or, you know, have a, the option or take it out. You know, you could send it forward to City Council if you so choose with a recommendation to approve minus, you know, 14 if that's your determination.
I think it's the same document. It just gives that little bit of wiggle room for someone else to discuss it.
So let me...
Alright.
Is any just further discussion or can we get a motion?
Okay. Well, I, I did have a question which might constitute discussion and, and that's why I was asking what the source of these were. I know some of these are FAA and FCC guidelines. And so those types of things, I don't think should have any variance. Because if the FAA has a certain height requirement or fall requirement, that's, that's bigger than the city or the state because that's federal, federal requirement. But if it's not FAA or not FCC, then I think we should have some flexibility. But I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater because I know some of these are federal reference.
And, and I, I agree with that, Ernest, but I think those issues were working themselves out when they went in front of the BOZA because they wouldn't be able to rule on that.
Okay.
I do, I do. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, um, the amendment of the wireless communication facilities, um, technology and law, but please remove the last statement we've been talking about, number 14. No variance to the requirements of the section shall be granted by BOZA. I'd like to see that come out and make him good with everything else.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Sorry. We have two other items, um, really quick that we just wanted to provide you an update with. Um, and if you, um, I'm sure you look at the hyperlinks, um, to these particular items, um, with your agenda. One is the walkable, uh, 29203 plan. That is a zip code area that is, um, basically the lower boundary of Sunset and Main Street. It goes up, um, Faroe Road kind of on a diagonal. It follows the Broad River and it, um, the top of that zip code is actually pretty close to where Killian Road is. So it's a fairly large zip code area. It includes parts of the county and the city. It is a joint planning project, um, with DHEC, um, the county and the city. DHEC actually received, um, funding to do 16 of these plans throughout the state. In the Midlands, they chose that particular zip code. Um, and the reason for it is it has, um, a lot of, um, health-related, um, issues in that particular area. And the particular plan is to look at, um, walkability of the area, walking to, um, and, and access to healthy food options and to, um, healthy lifestyle locations like parks and, um, things like that. And so that's what that particular plan is. So, um, you'll be getting emails and information about, um, those meetings and so we hope you'll be able to participate. The other, um, exciting plan that we have going, um, is the Capital City Mill District Area Plan. Uh, there are a couple of upcoming meetings, um, they're starting actually next week. Um, we'll be, um, out at the, um, the Quarry, um, event, um, next Friday and over the weekend. Um, but there'll be a steering committee. That particular area includes Whaley, Granby, Olympia, the South Assembly Area. Um, it is also a joint city-county plan. Um, it's funded by both, um, entities. And, um, the Boudreaux Group here in town is the planning consultant along with a whole bunch of sub consultants, um, working on that particular plan. So you'll hear more about that. Um, the, uh, Capital City Plan will be brought to you, um, when it's completed for your endorsement to be part of the city's comprehensive plan. I'm not sure exactly how the walkable plan will come out, um, in the end. It might be something that, um, we're going to seek some input on, um, but it is a DHEC plan. So those details haven't been quite worked out, but, um, we'll hope to see you participating in each of these planning, uh, meetings. And that's the end of the agenda.
If there's no other business, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meetings, meetings adjourned.
If you get a moment, please, um, if you haven't introduced yourself, please introduce yourself.